Okay, the time is six oh two. Today is February ninth. This is the regularly scheduled monthly meeting of the Southampton Local School Committee. All five committee members are present as well as our superintendent building principal and members of the public. Except the. I think before we. Go ahead. I'm only working on one screen here, so it's gonna take me a second. There we go. First item on the agenda is approval minutes and we don't have any before us, so we'll just bring that on to next month's meeting and get caught up on those.
Rachel feels horrible. She was gonna do them because we do not have a note taker, but she's been out. So she'll have them ready next time.
Okay, um, I will say that the meeting that we had, our January meeting, I was delinquent in getting that over to East Hampton Media and getting it posted, but I got an email yesterday that it was being posted. And the meeting, the special meeting, we had a twenty fourth. I just emailed that over to East Hampton Media about an hour ago. So that those, that meeting as well, I imagine within two days will be posted in the regular site. For those who are interested, before I open it up to public comment, just want to take note that of what everybody knows happened today. Sometime around ten thirty this morning, the governor announced the lifting of the mask being effective February twenty eighth. Our meeting was already scheduled for tonight. We're having it. It's missing from the agenda because we didn't, I didn't know when I put this agenda together that it was going to be on the agenda, so therefore I didn't post it. I am proposing that the school committee, instead of trying to debate this and figure this all out tonight on less than eight hours notice, that we allow sufficient time to do the fact finding to solicit the opinion, opinions of our local Board of Health. Stephanie Foss, who already sent us an email with some initial thoughts on it, give feedback from the parents. I'm sure the association is going to wanna give us an opinion of what their, their position is. So I originally was thinking that we would have a special meeting on Wednesday, the twenty third. I realized that's during the vacation break. We would need a minimum of three committee members to have that. The alternative, I believe, would be February eighteenth, which is a Friday. I I guess I feel that we need to have a discussion on this. We need, I would prefer to allow ample time to have the discussion, but I don't want the meeting to be passed February twenty eighth. It needs, in my view, this meeting needs to occur prior to the twentieth of February. So I'll take a second poll, poll the committee. If we can't figure it out, or if the committee wants to deal with this tonight, then we'll, we'll do that. What's the committee think?
Do we want to start it maybe under new business? Obviously not finish it tonight. If there is time. And I know I could do the eighteenth, but could not do during the vacation week.
Well, my hesitation is I haven't, I haven't got, I've got about thirty-two emails. And honestly, I've read six, only because of my schedule. I haven't gotten to them all. I wouldn't, if we're, if we're gonna have it, if we're gonna discuss it under new business, then I feel the odd, the public should be able to speak for as long as they want during public comment. But if we're gonna have a dedicated meeting that isn't tonight, then we would potentially postpone the public comment piece on mask, masking.
I think we need to have a separate meeting and I can do, I can kind of make anything work as long as it's on Zoom. But I think it, this is too short notice. I agree one hundred percent. We need to get more information, get our Board of Health involved.
Dylan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to the twenty-third. You know, my initial reaction to this is, cause like you, you know, we found out about this at ten thirty this morning with everybody else. You know, my initial reaction was to continue this out to March ninth for a couple of reasons. One, you know, it's a delicate subject as I think it was Carol said, and I, and I completely hear this. When we say we'll see means no, and I want to be very clear when I say what I'm saying that we'll see does not mean no here. I'm not saying we'll see. I am saying we got this information like John said, less than eight hours ago. You know, I know a lot of folks who have been critical of this mandate have been present at previous meetings and have, have voiced their opinions. My concern is that folks who are potentially for it have not, or for continued masking have not voiced opinions because masking has been the status quo. I, I, and I agree that I think there needs to be input from all the stakeholders, parents, nurses, teachers, Board of Health, community members. Sorry, this is a long answer to your very simple question. I'm available the twenty-third. I know eighteenth is the half day that we just recently approved, so I'm not sure how that affects things. But I can make myself available on either day, and I agree that we should definitely have a dedicated meeting to this so that folks have the opportunity to weigh in regarding this issue.
Awesome.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like giving a little bit more time for people to weigh in that haven't. I know that we got an email from Elizabeth today saying she hasn't had a chance to talk the, to the association about it. So just giving some more time. I mean, we could even do the meeting on the twenty-eighth. That's another, another option. I think it's important to have all the administrators present too, so I would feel less comfortable with doing it during the vacation week, so I would be more apt to lean towards the eighteenth or the twenty-eighth or the second or whenever. I mean, just as long as we have a, a week or two for more comments to roll in. I know that, you know, there were several people that were good to send comments right away. But, you know, not everyone has been able to do that, so, you know, there might be more people that feel strongly in favor of lifting the, the Mandy and might have ideas to offer around that. So just to give everyone a chance.
Okay. And I think just to confirm though, previously Dr. Bonneville, you said the, the eighteenth or the twenty-third was good for you?
Right.
Okay.
Unfortunately, on the twenty-eighth, I have negotiations for another school committee. I do also want to put out a survey to all, all families. I think schools might be doing it individually, but I'd like to have the data from all the schools to see where, how families respond to that as well. Which hopefully will go out Friday with the, with the newsletter.
Okay. And we just see, is, is Stephanie with us?
I don't think so.
Okay, no, I don't see her. All right. All right, so it sounds like the eighteenth, Friday, the eighteenth. It avoids the school vacation week. It fits it in. It's four thirty. Late enough for a good start for everybody, those that are traveling home from work and all that, or should we go to five?
I can do four thirty. I don't know about others.
I need five.
Yeah, I can't do four thirty. I'd need to start later, like five, after five thirty.
Okay, so let's do five thirty then. So I will, I will get this off to, up to Rachel and the superintendent tomorrow for posting. I am gonna ask the the Board of Health if they're able to do a joint meeting with us. So everyone's here at the same time. And Dr. Bonneville will take care of the district-wide survey. And we'll get those results prior to the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so let's go back on schedule here. So this is the point where we do public comment. Because we are conducting this meeting by Zoom, anybody that wishes to speak out in public comment, you just identify yourself in the chat to me. I'll call on you in, in the order in which you come in. And the time is six twelve. We'll start off with fifteen minutes of public comment. There's no objection. Okay, hearing none. First person to speak is Kathy Tibadu.
Thank you. Um, I can appreciate that you want to approach with caution and have times to think things through. While you're considering things, in the meantime, I would like our comments to be a part of the things you consider. So thank you. In light of Desi removing their mandates, um, I think it's important to be prepared to act in a timely fashion. I've actually prepared separate comments to direct to separate types of committee members tonight. My first comment is to those considering keeping the mask in place even after Desi gives us the option to not mask. On Friday, the CDC posted a study to their website which stated, quote, "Wearing a cloth mask was associated with lower adjusted odds of a positive test than with never wearing a face covering, but the difference was not statistically significant," end quote. The CDC is basically saying there is no difference between cloth masks and being unmasked. In-school transmission was so low that we recently dropped test and stay, we dropped contact tracing and reduced quarantine times. If we made all those advances with the use of ineffective masks, then how can we justify needing masks at all? My second comment is to those who would want to wait for a higher vaccination rate to be met or keep max masked on the unvaccinated even after Desi says we don't have to. On the CDC website, there's an update from July twenty-seventh in which the CDC states that the vaccine does not stop the spread. Because it is not stopping the spread anyway, we should not be considering it a valid reason for continued masking. This goes for the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. Segregating our students should not be an option. Our focus should be on uniting the Norris community, showing our optimism and respect for the advances that have been made. Let the kids begin to heal from the stress, judgment, fear, and mental illness this has brought about. To repeat my point above, we dropped the test and stay, dropped contact tracing and reduced quarantine times without meeting a particular vaccination rate. Transmission in school is not a problem. There's no reason to think it would be a problem going forward. My third comment is to those considering the, removing the mandate. Thank you very much. In summary, for everyone, if anybody has a concern about their personal safety, people can certainly choose to continue wearing a mask if that's what they and their families want, and they can remain fully protected by doing so. No one's mask is one directional. Any mask that can keep germs in can also keep germs out regardless of what other people are or are not wearing. This statement is confirmed by the Chair of our Local Board of Health, so I'll say it again. No one's mask is one directional. If it can keep germs in, it can keep germs out regardless of what other people are or are not wearing. The protection, the protection provided to the wearer is particularly true in the KN ninety-five base coverings if worn properly by the most vulnerable. For anyone else, I would truly caution the use of this kind of covering and the liability involved with them. A KN ninety-five is considered a respirator and as such, it is governed by OSHA in the workplace to make sure the dangers of the covering do not harm the wearer. By law, an employer must provide annual physicals to make sure a person is healthy enough to wear one, provide fit testing, use regimens, and more. It's a clear sign that the N ninety-fives are a powerful tool to be respected and used with caution. The bottom line is that our recent policy changes indicate our school is safe. Additional protection is available for those who want or need it. Anyone else should be allowed to make their own choices. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Carol Barkum.
First, I want to say thank you to Dylan because I appreciate that you actually quote something that I had to say, because a lot of times at these meetings I feel unheard. But maybe it's because you hear it twice, because I say the same thing at Hampshire Regional. As John stated, there was an announcement this morning in which Governor Baker and Commissioner Riley lifted the statewide mandate for schools as of February twenty-eighth. I'd like to share some of the direct quotes from their announcement. Governor Baker said, "We learned a lot about how safe schools are and how to keep kids in class learning over the course of the pandemic, and we have far more tools available to us to deal with the pandemic than we had back at the beginning. Our kids have had to put up with a lot of disruption, a lot of alone time, and have suffered a real learning loss over the past two years. There's no debating these points, no matter where you stand. It's time to give our kids a sense of normalcy and lift the mask mandate on a statewide basis for schools. Thankfully, the advances in vaccines, treatments, and test, testing are mitigating the harm that is caused by COVID. Those advances and hard work by so many parents, educators, and kids here in Massachusetts make it possible to give our kids what they have earned. The family, the familiar welcoming, nurturing classroom that they are used to. Today's announcement is another big step forward to safely manage COVID while we get back to what I would describe as familiar and normal aspects of school and life. The following comments were made by Commissioner Riley. During the last two years, the impact of COVID on children has caused a strain on their mental, emotional well-being, and academic success. We're relieved now to be in a place where we can provide young people additional relief from COVID nineteen restrictions so they can continue to move towards normalcy in the classroom. This decision was made in consultation with infectious disease physicians and the Mass Department of Public Health and other medical experts. We believe that removing the mask mandate will make it easier for students to learn. While masking is no longer a statewide requirement, we ask that all school leaders and students make sure they respect all individual choices around mask wearing. Please make sure to create a supportive environment that respects everyone's choice to do what is the most appropriate and comfortable for them. These are my own words. It's incredibly sad that our governor has to tell us the kids have earned a nurturing classroom, and it would be shameful for us not to follow his advice to end the masking so we can provide them a more positive environment. It's outrageous that Commissioner would say that removing masks would make it easier for students to learn. That means he's admitting that it is currently hard to learn. We admit we have a mental health problem here at Norris because we've implemented the second step program to try to mitigate it, but we are ignoring the easiest and most reasonable way for healing to begin, returning to normalcy. Our school committee and Board of Health are made up of knowledgeable volunteers. It's unreasonable to expect volunteers to be tasked with second guessing the recommendations of infectious disease physicians and the Massachusetts Department of Health and all of their resources. It would be easy to be swayed by all the feelings here tonight, but that would be wrong. Our kids deserve decisions based in facts, not feeling, not fear, but facts. I will close with one with more of Governor Baker's words. The reason we are taking the mask mandate off, however, is we do believe that our testing infrastructure, our vaccination programs, our data, and the guidance we've gotten from a lot of folks we talked to in the public health community is that, is there is a consequence at this point to keeping kids in masks, and we believe that we should move beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Labree.
Thank you. I'm reading from the, the letter that I submitted via email today. Dear Norris School Committee members, I am writing regarding the update on Desi Mask Requirement Memorandum issued today, February ninth, two thousand twenty-two, by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and its implications on the William E. Norris School mask requirements. As the memorandum states, as of February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the Commonwealth is no longer requiring that masks be mandatory in public schools, except in certain settings. Thus, the, the decision as to whether to continue to require mask wearing will be at the local level. The memorandum makes clear that the decision to lift the statewide mask mandate was based on the Commonwealth's high vaccination rates and widespread availability of COVID nineteen testing for students and school personnel. While we do have a relatively high vaccination rate in the Commonwealth as a whole of approximately seventy-six percent, the percentages of vaccination rates locally are somewhat lower at sixty-eight percent in Hampshire County and sixty-three percent in nearby Hampden County. However, of even more relevance is the vaccination rate at the Norris School, which per the superintendent's last newsletter of last Friday, February fourth, was approximately fifty-five point one percent. Further, while we do have a cold testing or safety check program for routine weekly testing in place at Norris, only a percentage of the school community is currently participating in this testing. While I do not believe the participation rate is available to the public, the participation rate in this program should certainly be relevant in the decision as to whether masks should continue to be required. As the memorandum states, Desi continues to recommend that districts and schools adopt a layered approach to mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen in school settings. Routine testing and vaccinations are considered some of those layers, and masks are another. If our school community's vaccination rates and rate of participation in the routine safety check program are both low, then these are two layers of protection that we don't really have, and thus we should continue to practice others such as masking. While I don't think it's unreasonable to plan for an end date to the mask requirement in the future, I do think it's much more appropriate to plan to remove that requirement when other layers of protection are more fully in place. Finally, I'd like to remind the school committee that this decision is most appropriately made with the guidance and per the recommendations of public health officials. And I appreciate that you, you noted that at the beginning of the discussion. It seems like the most appropriate way to make this decision is to schedule a meeting among the school committee, the district nurse manager, and/or nursing staff, and the Board of Health. The school committee has been faced with a significant challenge over the past two years and attempting to make sound decisions for our school community amidst a sea of feedback from the school community that oftentimes includes confidently asserted misinformation. I recognize and appreciate your continued professionalism during these times despite this challenge, and I encourage you to again, turn to the experts in making your decision. This should be a public health decision and not a popular opinion vote. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Mary Kate Chilson.
Hello, I have not spoken at one of these before. I've tuned into pretty much every school committee meeting for the last couple of years. I don't have anything formally written up. I just kind of made some bullet points after hearing the governor's announcement this morning. So just some of the things I would love for you guys to keep in mind is just as Tiffany mentioned, is our school vaccination rate is not great. I know the high school is much higher because they have a lot older kids, but our, our particular school community is under fifty-six percent, which isn't really ideal. The other thing I would love for you guys to keep in mind is we have preschool in the building and those children are not eligible for vaccines yet. And so if you take the mask away from them, even though they are an age that they're not likely supposedly to catch it, they don't have that layer of protection with the vaccine yet. And I think you need to take into consideration how the staff feels about that as well. Even though they're vaccinated, they're, you know, they're up and close with these three, four, five-year-olds all day long. The other thing I was thinking about is if I send my kids to school and I say, you know, I really want you to keep your mask on, and they take their mask off at school, because, you know, they're six, seven, eight. What kind of position does that put the teacher in? Where do they stand? Are, they mean it's not a school mandate anymore? But especially if they know the family wants the child to wear the mask. I feel like that could be a really kind of odd situation for the staff to be in. I also was thinking about how after every single school vacation, we've seen an increase in cases. So the idea of having February break and then coming back with no mask, it just feels like a lot of risk. I feel like if we can wait it out a little bit longer, we know New England weather is really chaotic and it's really unpredictable. February and March are kind of a toss-up every year. So when we, if we just wait it out a little bit longer and we know windows can be open and we can be doing a lot more stuff outside, it just gives a lot more wiggle room if cases were to go up after a vacation. And I think the other thing, the last, one of the last things I was thinking about is, you know, no one enjoys wearing these masks. No one's having, you know, a great time with it. And our kids are, you know, they're all being troopers and that's great. But I am nervous that if we take, if we stop the mask mandate, what happens when cases go up? You know, are we gonna tell all these kids and everyone's gonna get excited? We don't have to wear our masks anymore, go to school, and then all of a sudden cases go up, and then we have to go back. So again, that idea of waiting a couple of months so that way we're not in such a back and forth. Just let's wait until our vaccination rates are higher in our school community. The weather is better, so we have the advantage of being outside, and then think about taking the masks away. And just one last piece, sorry. As I've listened to a lot of these meetings, I feel like a lot, there's, I don't know how to word this. I feel like the staff isn't getting the credit that they deserve. I know our children are being affected by COVID. I get it. But my kids have never had never gone to school and not felt loved and cared for and having positive, loving, wonderful classrooms. So yes, there is a huge aspect of how COVID is affecting our kids, but I think our staff deserves a lot of credit and a lot of thanks because they're doing a really great job. And I don't think our kids wearing a mask for a couple more months is gonna change anything. So, thanks.
Thank you. Andrea Hearn.
Hi, I'm going, I have just a short statement to say, because now I know that you're going to be speaking about this at a meeting on a later date, so I will keep my opinion short, but first off, I want to thank you all on the school committee. For the last two years, you've been tasked with making impossible decisions. So I thank you for your dedication to the kids in Southampton. I'm speaking in support of Desi's decision tonight to lift the mask mandate in schools and I'm urging the school committee to follow their lead. My perspective on this comes not only as a parent with, of three kids at Norris, but also as a teacher currently teaching in a public school. During the early days of the pandemic, I was totally in support of everything we needed to do to keep people safe and healthy from COVID, including virtual learning, hybrid, you know, hybrid instruction, masking when we went back to school last year. There was so much we didn't know, and there were not vaccines widely available. Now that we have vaccines, we have better treatment for COVID. I feel like it's time for us to return to normalcy for our children who've paid a tremendous price in their education over the past two years. I've seen this with my own children as well as students that I teach. Long-term masking has many social and academic consequences for our children. Young children are especially vulnerable because they're just learning language and how to read and respond to social cues. This learning is almost impossible when you can only see someone's eyes and you're forced to infer the rest of their face. I'm questioning the fairness of continuing to require masks for children while they're less often being required for adults. Adults can choose to go many places without their masks now, like restaurants, bars. Children should have been able to gain these freedoms back first, before adults. Their brains are still developing and they are learning so much from seeing the people around them. The usefulness of masks in the beginning of the pandemic completely outweighed the detriments to learning. It was really important for everyone to wear them. But now with the options of the vaccines, good hygiene routines in the school, and widespread availability of testing, the harmfulness of the masks is outweighing their usefulness. I'm urging you to please consider how important it is for mental health and social and academic learning for children to see each other's faces and the faces of their teachers. And by lifting the mask mandate, we're not saying that nobody can wear masks. It's still a choice for people who wish to wear them for an extra layer of protection. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And right now, our, our last speaker that's identified is Katie Davio W.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Katie Davio. I'm here tonight to express my feelings in that. I don't believe our children should be wearing masks for seven plus hours a day. I believe that we need to move on from here without making our kids continue to carry this weight. My boys are young learners. I have a five year old and a seven year old. They are learning to read. They need to learn. They need to see their teacher's mouths, their friends' faces. My five year old hates going to school. He's a incredibly lively boy and he hates going to school because he has to wear a mask all day. He's a happy boy and he can't see friends. He can't see his teachers. And every day on his little paper that he comes home with, he circles that his feelings today are sad. He says that just about every single day. They complain about wearing them on the playground, on the play structure. They talk about not having enough mass breaks at school. And I really wanted to drive home to the school committee tonight that our children have been doing this for far too long and it's hurting them in every way imaginable, not just my children. There's endless parents that feel the same way. Our kids have been stripped of basic humanity. They're faceless. And I feel like this piece is just incredibly highly ignored by the school committee. It's a huge component that really needs to be factored into this final decision. We've had very few meaningful studies on the benefits of masking our kids. In fact, leading up to the Christmas break, I received multiple emails from the school nurse that a child in my son's learning environment had tested positive. And so he did in fact bring COVID home to our family just before we broke for Christmas break. And that happened while he was wearing a mask. So it's, it just makes no sense. With all due respect to the committee, I appreciate tremendously what you folks do and how much stress and pressure you're always under. But I feel that this should be my decision as a parent to decide if my son continues to wear a mask at school, not yours. This should be my parental right. If you had listened to Governor Baker and Commissioner Riley today, I listened to their speeches. I know several of their parents have quoted them today. But they have consulted with all of the experts in making this decision. And in their news briefing today, they themselves attributed, said that they attributed their decisions on removing the mask mandate to the low risk of COVID in young people and our widespread availability of vaccines and tests distributed across the state. Governor Baker said it's time to give our children a sense of normalcy back. We live in a small town with small COVID positive numbers and I'm asking for this to end on February twenty eighth. Our children have towed the line long enough. They've sacrificed enough of their education and childhood. Their mental health is suffering tremendously and it's time to end this. Please give parents the freedom to make their own choice for their children. Mask choice should be available to parents. This burden needs to be lifted from our children. I feel very strongly about that. We have far more tools now than we did in twenty twenty. And so my question to the committee is, when will this just be enough already?
Thank you. And Jennifer Johnson is our next speaker, but before Jennifer starts, if there's, she's our last one. So if there's anybody else, please identify yourself in the comment section. And Jennifer.
Hi, everyone knows who I am. I have been at every meeting since September and you all know everything that I've been saying. I actually was gonna come here tonight with a completely different agenda and things to talk about because I'm sick of hearing myself talk about the same thing. And it's, I feel like it's useless for me to try to change people's minds who have already been set in their ways and they're not actually considering changing how they feel. They're considering letting us perpetually live in fear of something that Governor Baker himself said today. We need to learn how to live with. It's not going anywhere. Germs are gonna be here forever. And then this happened today. And listening, though I can value and respect your thoughts on not making a decision tonight, like, I understand that and I can side with that. However, the reaction and the tone and the condescension in everyone's or not everyone's, some people's responses is ridiculous. And I don't know why you as a group feel that the commissioner of education who started this whole thing and this whole problem with a mask mandate and everything else and the governor who, like many people before me, has said, contacted infectious disease specialists, public health, a mattering, smattering of qualified people. And they made this decision. What are the qualifications that each one of you hold to prove them and those specialists wrong? How much more information do you need to make the decision that it is my choice for my child to wear a mask? If you want to continue to live in fear and have your child wear a mask to school every day, then that is your choice. And I fully support your choice, but stop telling me the choices that I have to make for my family. It's not right. You have the choice to get a vaccine. You have the choice to wear a mask. You have the choice to not go to school. Everybody has these choices. Why is mine getting taken away? And you telling me my child has to wear a mask when, again, someone who has consulted many experts in the field of health and science and everything else says that they don't. Why it's not just a simple, they said it's okay for us to take it away, then it's okay for us to take it away and on February twenty eighth, it's gone. Someone quoted the CDC as their differing opinion. Governor Baker answered that question during his press conference, saying that the CDC looks at fifty eight states, I mean, sorry, fifty states in the United States, and that's how they compile all their data. He has to look at one, Massachusetts. We have always led the country in vaccination rates for all vaccines and we're second in the country right now for vaccination rates in COVID. I don't care if our school population vaccination rate was two. That doesn't make a difference. That means that those people don't think that the vaccine is right for their child or for themselves. So they're okay with taking the risks that come along with that. If you're a teacher and you're afraid of that risk, then by all means, continue to wear your KN and ninety five masks. My preschooler goes to preschool every day. He doesn't wear a mask because he needs to learn how to speak properly. He has a speech issue. Why would I send him to preschool to help him on an IEP for speech if he was gonna wear a mask? How is that gonna help him? I don't, your feelings and how you feel things should be run is not relevant to this. If you want your kids to go to school in three masks, by all means, send them. But something has to change. Someone has to take a stand and put a foot in the other direction. And no one is doing it. Everyone's wait and see, oh, what, so someone, the next town gonna do? What's the other town gonna do? No one has the balls to say, you know what, I know what's right and I know what's wrong. And those parents deserve the choice to do what's right for their kids, no matter what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. I see one person has their hand up. They're identified as iPhone. I can't let you speak if I don't know your name.
Sorry, I missed that.
Just state your, state your name.
Jane Fitzgibbon.
Okay, go ahead.
I of course don't have anything written down as well. But I just, I'm liking what everybody is saying for the most part. And in my opinion, I also agree with the group of people that are saying we should remove the mask mandate for children. I also agree that they've gone through enough. It's just, it's sad. Like, I feel like no one, like, do you ask the students? Do you ask like your kids at home, like, how are you doing? How's your breathing? Like, I, like, they have to wear a mask outside. Like, I just think it's sad. Just from like a parent's point of view. I also think like, we've been listening to the, you know, the CDC, the Desi for so long. Why, why are we questioning like what they have to say now? Excuse me. I just think that it's enough personally. And I would appreciate if it was took into consideration because the kids have suffered enough. That's just where I'm coming from. I have like two kids in a school who are amazing and I couldn't support the staff there like anymore. They're amazing. Everything they've had to deal with and overcome over these past couple of years, I couldn't imagine having to be in charge of that. I just think this needs to be heard. Like, why aren't we listening to them? We can't just, like she said, can't just keep listening to, oh, let's wait a little bit longer, wait a little bit longer. Then it's freaking Memorial Day weekend. Here we are again, waiting to see if someone had a picnic and gets COVID. Like, you have to start somewhere and I just think it's time. And again, I support everybody's decision. If you wanna wear a mask, I support you a hundred percent and your family's beliefs and your fear or not fear of whatever you wanna do, but they're my kids and I'd like to make a choice for them. So that's all I have to say and I'll stop crying now.
Thank you. All right, and that, that concludes our public speaking. The time is six forty three. All right, the next item on our agenda is we have the circulation of warrants, the worth three warrants that were sent out today that I signed off on. I can provide copies to any board member that would like them. And we have announcements and correspondence is next.
A woman that just spoke, you're unmuted.
Oh shit, sorry.
Okay. We have two correspondents, two different letters. Let me just open them up here. Both of them are related to the same subject. We have a letter that was sent to us that has been shared with the committee from a Jill Shear Yonker of Winchester, Virginia, related to her parents, longtime Southampton residents. Her mother has passed and she is looking to do, she was inquiring whether or not the softball fields at Norris were available for dedication to her. In addition to that, we also received a letter for the same subject from the Southampton Lions Club, supporting her cause and request. So I looked quickly earlier. I didn't find any policy in the Southampton School Committee book, but there is a policy at the regional level FF that talks about naming rights and that. I also know that the town itself has a bylaw that's going through the review naming rights and things of that nature. So I think what the committee should do is unless they object, I'll respond to her acknowledging receipt of the letter on that we received it and that we are going, we need to do some inquiries with the town. There's a question as to whether or not the fields behind Norris are actually on school property or town property. If it's town property, then it's a board of selectmen issue. If it's school property, which I guess we'd have to pull out the property card and see if that land is attached to the school. But I can do all that offline and then report back at our regular monthly meeting with an update. Unless somebody wants to do something different.
No, I think that sounds good, John.
Okay. All right. And yeah, and again, you know, the letter's there, but I believe she was a thirty four year educator of the Norris, of Southampton schools. Next, we have principal's report. Ms. Pluta.
John, do you wanna share that or do you want me to just read it?
I'm working off my laptop, so I.
Okay. You want me to share my screen?
Sure.
Okay, hold on one second.
Let me do, let me just, you should be able to do it now.
Okay. It's a pretty short report. Just for your information, we are going to have more summer programming this summer. We are going to be applying for the ASOS grant, which is the after school, out of school time grant. I believe we don't apply until May, but I talked to Kate Mesmer, our grants writer, and she said that we are going to get it. So we know we will receive the same amount of money this year as we received last year, which was forty thousand dollars, which will support our after school activities in the summertime. So this will be in addition to students who have IEPs that get invited to summer school, we'll be able to invite many more students this year, which will be great. And we will look at our data for ELA and math and invite students at that time. Right now, we have a hundred and forty two families signed up to receive COVID tests biweekly. We have completed our winter reading and math assessments and students in grades K to three who have been identified for reading and math support will begin reading, receiving that support next week. I also sent out a letter today announcing that to parents because I know I sent a letter out in the fall talking about interventions for students and that they're fluid. And now we have a math interventionist also that started in January. And after looking at the data, she's putting together groups, so parents may hear from her. And if you don't hear from her, you just know that this is a fluid process. So students that need to be seen will be seen for the amount of time that they need in order to make progress and then they'll be back in the classroom. Our MCAS testing schedule was sent home to families recently. Our NAEP testing, which is National Association of Educational Progress, that was completed last Wednesday, February second, when in the cafeteria and everybody was compliant and very well. And the people that came in to do the testing gave us much compliments and kudos for behavior of our students and how well they did. Our preschool screenings are being scheduled for March, the beginning of March. And information about those preschool screenings can be found on our school website. There's a clickable button on there. And our enrollment is at four hundred and seventy six with forty three school of choice students included in that number.
Any question?
Somewhat, somewhat related to your report, I was hoping for the next meeting, if you could let us know what your current stockpile of N ninety five and K and ninety fives are. That way, if the mask mandate is lifted, my big concern specifically around that is families who may not otherwise be able to access the masks, is there gonna be a sufficient supply for them, for those families who, who would want their children to be masked with those?
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
The KN ninety fives that were sent though, those were adult sizes only, weren't they?
Yeah. So Dylan, I could talk to you about this as I do inventory, but we, the N ninety fives have to be fitted, right?
Right.
Okay, so and then the KN ninety fives are the ones we did receive and they were passed out to staff. We haven't given out those type of masks to students at all, but we do have the two ply masks that are looking surgical like, not just cloth masks. We have those too that students take like when they come in from recess and their mask breaks or it's yucky and they need a new one. You know, we have, we have that. So I'm not sure.
No, that makes sense. So, so I guess I'll reframe that. Could we potentially look at what what resources, not necessarily monetary, but what resources? For example, could we put together a list of approved masks or places where child sized higher efficacy, efficacy masks could be purchased by parents should they wish to purchase them for their children?
Okay.
And distribute that, I guess, just is my thought.
I could, can I say something?
Of course.
I put something in the newsletter maybe about a month ago because Amherst School District used, I don't even know the brand, but I did put in the newsletter. It came in child sizes and the efficacy rate was ninety five plus. But I've also heard though, now that all the schools are using this excellent company, go back through the smores, things are kind of on backorder, but I will work with Stephanie to get some appropriate resources out there so parents can, can explore.
Great, thank you.
I just have a question about the COVID protocols. It says a hundred and fifty two families, so that's not individual students, it's collective families.
I'm sorry, I think it is, it is students. A hundred and fifty two students are getting the tests.
Okay, and those are the ones that are sent home?
Yes.
Okay. And then as far as the pool testing, how many, I guess it'd be important to know. For our next meeting, how many are getting pooled testing, like what the participation rate is?
Were we not allowed to disclose that? It's, I mean, that would be a Stephanie thing and I can find that information out and tell you if it's okay to do that, but. Why am I thinking that we were not disclosing that?
Just the numbers, the percentages? I don't think we need to know who is participating, but a percentage of the population would be important.
Okay.
Yeah, you could, you can do that.
Okay, we can get that number.
I think just as we go through these questions, I'm jotting down a whole list. And. I'll send it off to administration. They can determine who who's going to be the author of the question. Anything else for the principal's report? Nope. Okay, I believe superintendent's reports next.
Sure, thank you. I'm going to try not to mention COVID at all for change. A big congratulations to Principal Lauren Hoads at the high school. She's no longer the interim. So we made that announcement earlier this week, which is wonderful. And I'd also like to thank Bobby Jones. She has been working her tail off, trying to develop five different budgets. Meet with the different schools and the different departments and she's working morning, noon and night. So Bobby, thank you very much. I know that you are on this call. We'll be talking about the budget later. We did have a school committee chairs meeting on January twenty-seventh and the two big issues that we discussed was the five district agreement. Would which. I think Austin's the the representative, he can kind of fill you in on. And the preliminary budget presentations, the expectation with that. So with the five district agreement. Roughly, we took out the anything to do with central office costs. So everybody seemed to agree on the rest of the document, which talks about membership. Hiring, disciplining and terminating the superintendent. Which were awkward conversations with me sitting there, but it's never going to happen. So just coming up with that. So the idea is that committees will look at this in February and March and hopefully be able to vote on it in March and April. A lot of the committees have done. The first look through, so then we'll 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 gather our thoughts and take it from there. We also did put in for Grant one, two, three, which is rural efficiencies grant. One of the wonderful things is countywide, the collaborative put a. Put a grant request in for countywide professional development. So that's why when we do the calendar, we did schedule a November eighth day because most schools are off. Countywide for elections. So it would be great for, you know, from from pre-K all the way up to grade twelve to have content specific. Professional development with like-minded peers. So that's pretty exciting. And also we're looking for a K through twelve math initiative, just to better align the bridges program. We had started bridges before COVID. And teachers are still. Would prefer some professional development on that, just increased alignment and also perhaps get some instructional coaches. And if we don't get the grant money for that, we'll still think of a way to offer professional development for teachers as well. Two other things, district-wide attendance in the beginning of January was really scary. But now this month rates are up considerably. Norris rates are up almost six percent. And usually you try to be between ninety-three and ninety-six percent for school. So if you fall below that, you kind of take a closer look. So Norris was at eighty-seven point eight in in January, which isn't bad. So that's good to see. We don't have those significant absences anymore. And lastly, Nancy's been working with Elisa and special ed team at Norris. On the neurodiversity advisory committee. They've met, I think, three times since the last time they saw you. Nancy and I are going to go to Agwam at the beginning of March to look at one of their programs and we're going to have Nancy come in. March, just to give an update on where we are with this and I'll talk a little bit more when we're talking about budget discussions. So that's it for me.
Questions for superintendent? Dylan.
Getting a little ahead of things here, maybe Bobby can address this. Did the Hampshire Regional Finance Committee meet today? And do you happen to have the results of that you can share during that section?
They did meet today.
Okay.
And as far as the results, only the subcommittee met, so we haven't gone to the. All committee yet, but I I could give you, if you're looking for percentages or whatever you're looking for, I could give you what we discussed.
Well, we can talk about it when we get there. I guess I'm just looking for highlights. And not to get ahead of myself here either, you know, that was a topic of discussion at Hampshire Regional about going back to the individual communities before the vote on Monday. So I was kind of hoping to have an idea of what the subcommittee had. Proposed that we could have a meaningful discussion about that tonight.
Okay, so why don't we wait until the budget discussion then?
Other questions under superintendent's report? No, okay. The chairs report. The five chairs did meet I because of work obligations, I wasn't able to attend this month. But the synopsis I got, superintendent already touched on it. Of what the highlights were. And again, just a reminder, the five chairs meet just to kind of attempt to create some sort of cohesion amongst our agendas. So that when there are global discussions, every committee is getting it on the agenda with the same information. As time goes on. And then. Dylan's going to give us the Hampshire Regional School Committee report. I will just add Dylan that myself and. At Gibson, the town administrator attended that subcommittee meeting this afternoon.
No, are we up at Hampshire Regional? I'm sorry. I'm trying to pull up my agenda so I can refresh my recollection on exactly what we did, even though it was only two days ago. Yeah, as Deanna pointed out, congratulations Principal Hoads on her appointment as as full-time principal. We approved the district improvement plan, which is great. There's been some really good improvements in there describing specifically what's going. What some more specifics on how the district overall is going to see. We approve the calendar, which has a moving of the professional development day, which I think will be discussed at some point during tonight's meeting. Hopefully to get a countywide. Professional Development Day in with surrounding communities, which I think the teachers are pretty excited about. There was also a vote regarding the COVID stuff. It was a unanimous vote to send in the eighty percent attestation. Which is going to be reviewed at the next Monday's meeting, which is primarily a budget meeting. However, I think Governor Baker's announcement today changes it a little bit, but there seems to be overwhelming support. On the high school side at least regarding. The masking. And I think. That covers it.
Okay, Allison PTO.
They met last night. They did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago. They met at Paisanos and they went over some of the. Setting up for the spring bizarre craft fair thing that they're going to do in place of the winter bizarre that is usually done. So they broke up into like subcommittees, like who's going to plan the raffles, the games, the vendors. And they're hopefully going to meet again during February break. They were still deciding on a day that would work for everybody to meet again. But that craft fair bizarre is going to be on May fourteenth. They went over that possibly March eleventh, there's going to be. Like a crazy hair or crazy hat day. It's a half day of school that day. And that was it. It was kind of a quick meeting. We did talk a little bit about how it always works out to be the day before this one. So I'm telling them something like all the things from our meeting a month ago. So it seems like they already know all of the information that I have to say. So we're really hoping that they could be the following Tuesday, not the one before, just because it's everything I have to say, they already know.
Austin, school council.
Yeah, school council met three weeks ago. We did a first pass on the new school improvement plan. Which is kind of meant to piggyback somewhat on the district improvement plan that we've been working on. But would have goals specific to Norris and our students over there. Started with ELA, did some some math too, but it was just a first pass, so we're. Gathering feedback ahead of the next. The next meeting, which should be next Wednesday.
Okay, and then Austin staying with you on the on the five district working group. I know I had to get out halfway through that and you stayed for the whole thing.
Yeah, so not too much of a change there. There were some concerns like Dr. Bonneville. Mentioned around. Actions that could be taken by individual committees versus the all districts committee on disciplinary and hiring practices. We previously had taken out any mention of the. Budgetary voting and. Shared costs language in an effort to have something, hoping that we could later modify it. So the way that it's left now is it's kicked back to the individual committees, which will looks like is on the. End of the agenda tonight, so we'll review that. And if we have any questions or concerns about the current language in the agreement, we're supposed to forward that soon as we can to our. District attorney. Our Hampshire Regional District Attorney, not the criminal DA. And. We'll have another working group meeting if there are significant concerns. Otherwise, we're going to schedule a. One of the the big ones with everybody. Marathon meetings and we'll try and potentially ratify that agreement at that time.
Okay. Julian, collaborative.
Okay, so the collaborative met on January twenty-sixth, a couple of weeks ago. They talked about there, there's a finance update. There is a presentation. From the Massachusetts migrant education program that was pretty informative. They went over and appointed a chief procurement officer that is new. We reviewed the executive director is at the six month mark. He's been new. Todd Gazda to the collaborative, so he's at the six month mark. So just to kind of overview of how he's been working with the chair and the board and just making plans for how his annual review will go. And and what the process is for that. And. And that's about it. It was a lot of finance information about. Just balancing the budget. And then they talked about how just the central office there has had the same struggles as most with COVID. Having people out and just navigating navigating that. They meet again in two months or in every other month meeting.
Okay, yeah, Francine, select board update. You got to unmute Francine.
Thank you. Okay, I know that John mentioned at the last meeting that Southampton was awarded one point eight four million in ARPA funds. A survey of spending priorities has been posted on the town website. As a means to gather taxpayer input into the priorities on how the money should be spent. With the understanding that there are significant challenges specifically impacting families with school age children. The survey poses questions specifically to parents of Norris and Hampshire regional kids. I'm encouraging everyone on the committee and anyone listening to please complete the five minute survey. That will provide information to the select board. That will help them in determining the town's use of these funds. The last date to complete the survey is February fourteenth, next Monday. And what a way to spend Valentine's Day. If you really want to celebrate. And then just to mention that there are paper copies available of the survey at town hall, the council on aging and at the library. The select board purchased slightly less than fourteen hundred at-home COVID test kits. The first batch has arrived and a supply has been provided to Norris for students, faculty and staff. We know that the schools will receive additional tests from the state. The original allocation of these tests made by the Board of Health targeted town employees, the schools. Including Hampton, including Southampton students who are at Smith Vocational. Along with the Council of Aging and the Southampton Meadow Apartments. More information will be forthcoming on how additional tests can be obtained. It was reported at the last Board of Health meeting on January twenty-seventh that the number of active COVID state cases was thirty-six. Which is a significant drop from the more than two hundred active cases just two weeks prior. And I don't know if everyone knows this or not, but. Southampton is no longer represented by Lindsay Sabadosa in the State House. As a result of the twenty twenty census, redistricting occurred and Southampton is now paired with a portion of Westfield. And our representative is Kelly Pease of Westfield. So we need to go to the house for anything. You're going to be knocking on someone else's door, Kelly Pease. We have yet to meet him and hope to do so soon. And of you bringing it up, budget season is upon us. And so I think we're going to be seeing a little more of one another between now and May. Not a bad thing. And then finally, I just want to say with code with the school committees across the country, including here in Southampton. Have shoulder tremendous responsibility and I want to thank you all for your dedication and your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Francine.
John, can I just say something?
You sure?
Thanks, Francine. I just want to say thank you for those hundred COVID tests. I didn't even know we were getting them and someone walked in the door with them yesterday, so I would have included it in my principal's report had I known. So thank you.
Good.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, good. Put them to good use. Thank you.
And it's. It's not on our master reports here, but. We usually have a spot for an update from the association. We did all receive an email earlier. I believe today from Elizabeth Colley, the president of the Southampton Teachers Association. And there, there was a three question or a survey of three questions that she provided the results on. That she wanted us to receive and take into consideration. So we have that and we note that that it was brought in. And we can refer to that. That was pretty much centered around opening. Removing the restriction that Norris is close to the public. Next is the preliminary FY twenty-three budget discussion. Bobby.
Okay, so to be quite honest, I haven't really had any. Huge conversations yet with Principal Pluta. That will be coming up in the next few weeks now that I'm closing out most of the two regional district budgets. But I would like a little feedback from the committee. As to what they think. We should be putting out there. What are your thoughts? And and maybe, John, this is a good time. Do you want to give your feedback to our subcommittee meeting today?
Sure, I can, yeah. So as I said, today, the. Hampshire Regional has a subcommittee of its school committee for the for the finance side. And. They met today at three thirty in room one twenty-three at Hampshire Regional, myself and Ed Gibson, the town administrator. Were in the audience along with. Dana.
Don.
Don.
Scabarati.
Scabarati, the town administrator from Goshen. And then the the rest was the committee and all that. And. I think it was a, it was, it was a healthy discussion by the committee, by the subcommittee. With a. Fair amount of input, I guess, from the two town administrators that were there and what their thoughts were. The Lauren did did a good job explaining, you know, what the. Extras or the add-ins, I don't want to call them enhancements, but what she feels she needs, what they are for. Primarily two additional staff members. An increase in the overall cost of graduation. Are in the what I'll call the operating budget. And then there were two additional or three items that are in like their capital improvements. Overall, the the expenses right now, if they remain as is. Are a four point four three percent increase. And with, after taking into account the adjustments in anticipated receipts from the state. And with after taking into account the adjustments in anticipated receipts from the state. Which. Not all of them go up and they don't all go up equally two and a half percent. For example, the chapter seventy. Is capped at thirty dollars per student and that's their increase, which comes out to about eighteen thousand two hundred and ten dollars. The. Like I said, expenses year over year are an increase of four point four three. Receipts have increased by a hundred and ninety thousand. Leaving leaving a shortfall of four hundred and ninety three thousand, which then gets assessed out to the members. To come up with a. Twenty three budget of sixteen mil, sixteen point one million compared to twenty twenty two's budget of fifteen point four million, six hundred and eighty three thousand dollar increase. Because of how we do the the assessments down to the towns. And it's the rolling five year average and all that. What does that translate out to Southampton? And at that request with is five point one six percent increase to Southampton's budget. Now, if hypothetically, they said we want a zero budget, zero increase budget, we're not going to. Do the increase in graduation and we're not going to add the two positions, but we are going to do. The capital improvements because that comes out of a different pool of money. So think of it as your level funded. The increase to Southampton. Level service, the increase to Southampton would then be a three point eight percent. Increase. So under either one of those scenarios where above our two point five. Mark for ourselves, which for this committee. As a repeat of last year. There's a cumulative of five percent. So if Hampshire Regional takes two point five, then there's two point five left for Norris. Hampshire Regional takes more and I'm oversimplifying this. But Hampshire Regional takes more, that's less that's available to Norris because there's only. X amount that's going to come from the town. It's a certain percentage of the town's budget that's going to be allocated to education. So we made a. I made a passionate plea with them, understanding that it's a delicate educational balancing match. And that I completely understand the staff members are counselors. They're not guidance counselors, they're.
School adjustment.
Thank you. School adjustment counselors. Because they've like us, like Norris, they've seen an uptick in emotional needs of the students. But one of one of the observations that I made is is that. We're trying to do the same thing at Norris and because. Once our kids hit Hampshire Regional, our kids make up fifty five, fifty six percent of that student body. So I applaud you for trying to correct it up here, but if we can't correct it at the lower grades. It's just going to snowball and compound. So we it's a delicate balancing match that has to happen. There was discussion about possibly. Utilizing additional. School choice funds. That they have. There, there's. You know, at the, at the end of twenty one, the the balance was one point seven million. They've got new money coming in. However. They've allocated six hundred and seventy thousand to support the budget. So that would come out of that and then it goes back in. But the projections are keeping that somewhere around just a little over one point seven if everything works out the way it's planned. So the question that was posed that was just left there, not answered, and we didn't expect an answer. Was is that possible an area where where? Maybe an additional two hundred thousand could be used, or could it come out of your your free, what we call the, what I call free cash certification? The problem on a regional level is. Yes, they have. If if you saw the assessment, I think it's six hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars in free cash got certified. And they're looking to use two hundred and. Sixty five of that. For the budget and then additional amount for those capital projects that I was referring to.
Can I just clarify, John, before you go too far? So just for the school choice, we're using actually. Nine hundred thousand for. Fiscal twenty two and twenty three. As well as another hundred thousand in out of district. Tuitions for school choice kids that come to our district, but then have gone out of district. So that's just a, that was for school choice. And then. The free cash is going to be two sixty five, which is a hundred and fifty to the assessment fifty for the reserve. And then sixty five for the capital.
Okay, okay. And then the issue with why you don't want, why the region doesn't want to use more of the free cash. Which rough, rough and tough numbers would leave about four hundred thousand. In free cash is because unlike the town that can call a special town meeting and go back to the voters. Once the budget's passed, the district stuck with that budget for a year. So if if the boiler was to blow and it's not covered on the insurance policy, that's the only avenue that they have to go back. So. There's a reason not to deplete it because it doesn't automatically get replenished every year. It's slowly built up over time. I don't believe, at least during the during the. Public portion of the meeting, there was, it was just a general discussion. I don't. I don't recall that there were any votes or any adjustments done. It was just making sure everybody was heard and trying to get. I guess some of the issues out there prior to Monday night. What I miss?
Nothing. I think it's just. I think it's really hard because Hampshire Regional totally doesn't want to. Take a budget that's on the backs of the elementary schools. But at the same time, they have to, you know, it's obviously higher to educate at the high school level than it is at the elementary, but. We don't, we don't want, and I think this year particularly, that they are thinking about the fact that. The elementary schools can't take the hit. And trying to understand the two and a half percent that the. Towns are under. It's just, I think it's a bigger problem down the road that needs fixing. We're lucky, we really are, that we have the great schools that we do. But that's because we have actually financed them. So. It's it's a tricky situation. I totally get it. It's really hard to. To do the regional budget. And again, you know me, I've said this a million times. If we regionalize, it'd be a different story. I don't think I'll see that in my time, but certainly. I mean, it's a thought for the future because. That would, that would become a different story. So.
One, one of the things that because it was said in the public portion is the. The Goshen Town Administrator, under the, under the. Under the proposal that includes the additional staff. Goshen's portion would be fifty three thousand dollars. They only have sixty thousand dollars before they hit their ceiling. So that would, if they funded that, that would, I'm sorry, they have ninety thousand. And they need twenty seven. For their regional school. The next number, but if you add the two numbers together for Goshen, they're only going to have seven thousand dollars left in their ceiling for their, for the rest of their entire budget. So they're, they're. If this stays the way it is, they're going to have to go for a debt override. And they, they haven't been able to pass one. So they did, they did pass one.
Three years ago.
And. You were heading, yeah, because our, again. Under that scenario, you know, Goshen is up nine point six percent. We're five point one six. West Hampton is eight point four five and Williamsburg is eight point three. Chesterfield would see a reduction of thirteen point seven two percent. Which all has to do with the five year rolling population average.
And the state minimum contribution, yeah.
Yeah. So. I mean, ideally, we, we got to, we have to attempt to find a middle ground and, you know, we'll wait for what Hampshire Regional, what school committee, Hampshire Regional School Committee does on Monday night. And try and follow their lead. You know, I'm sure Dylan will be there. You know, representing our interests. One of the things we did talk about afterwards is. Just kind of putting. The thoughts on paper and sharing them with the other. Elected officials from Southampton that are on that committee. You know, they're free to vote how they wish, but. We will know more after that vote happens, right? Because then we can move on to our budget and. See what those numbers are being, get that over to the town and it'll have its cascade effect. Bobby, do you think, are you still on track to? Anticipate us voting to approve our budget the second Wednesday in March?
Yes, I think we could. Well, I mean. It depends. I mean, you might have to hold an extra meeting or something, but I certainly would have numbers available for that meeting. You know. But I don't know that you'd vote it necessarily right then. I would think. I know Ed, when we met with Ed, he was said March would be wonderful, April would be great. So. I'd just like to leave room so that whatever we do put forward for. The elementary budget, there's time for discussion and there's time for thought and. Time to come back if we needed to. I think one of the, one of the things that Eliza is probably so tired of doing year after year after year is. Putting forward her. What she wants and knowing she's never going to get it. And it's time consuming, it's hard and it's depressing, you know, I mean, from. Year after year after year. These are my words, not hers, by the way, but. It's just, and I know we're in a tight spot with all the towns. I know that. I know the townspeople are very supportive. I don't have any issues there. It's just you are, we're in a, we're in tight spots and we have to figure out what we're going to do to change that. You know, whether we decrease programming, whether we, you know, what are we going to do? Lauren puts forward her best budget. She was very thoughtful. I think if she thought she could get, get away with it, she probably would have put forward a level funded budget, you know? But she also has to do what's right by her school. And she has to be thoughtful there as does Eliza. And and it's too bad that it's on the back of one or the other.
Yeah.
That's, that's hard.
I mean, the the biggest number one ask is going to be supporting this neuro diversity program at Norris to help our. Media students, let's say. And I know that Nancy Parlock Lash has put together a budget for that and the cost. To start the program is exactly the same cost as it costs to send one student out of district. So that would save that money. Over time, just like the language based classroom program has saved us out of district cross with. Out of district costs for students that have language based learning disabilities. It has saved us money. But when we're starting our budget talks at a deficit because we already have money. From Esser waiting to support the budget where we already know we can't support our budget. I just don't know how I even come to anybody and say, this is what I need for a budget when I can't even support the budget that I have.
Right. So I think. I think if you take last year's budget and we increase it by the two and a half percent. For operational costs. You know, that might even still be a stretch to see if if we can get, if we can get two and a half percent out. But I think the question would be is what what's in there or perhaps in Nancy's budget? What's there that could really just be its startup costs? It's one, one time, maybe two. Maybe two payments. That we should try to find a funding source outside of. The tax dollar budget, if you will, and specifically, I'm thinking if if the survey. That's out there in the community comes back to the community supports, doing something to try and. Erase the learning loss that happened. And part of that is. Creating this new program that needs a one time infusion of X cash that's not creating overheads. Kind of like our curriculum line item, right? The forty thousand that's there. We need that. And so this would be a bomb beyond. I wouldn't want to substitute those dollars. But I think we could make an argument. To utilize ARPA funds. For the one time cost. And we've got a three year period for that, right? So we possibly have. A three year runway or three bikes at the apple to do that. The other thing. Didn't Eliza, you just kind of touched on it is last year when we were here, the committee was pretty strong that school choice. No salary should be coming out of the school choice budgets. The vice principal's line item should be in the budget, not. In there. So we, so we can see where those things are. I don't know if it's going to be possible to do that. Well, I suppose we put the line item and it's just a bigger transfer of school choice to fund it all. But then the other thing, go ahead, Bobby.
That's essentially what we do. I mean, we use. And that's where we probably ended up in this boat is years ago, the school committee wanted to use more of our school choice monies. Landing us in this position where we didn't have the money to. Support the positions we were supporting. We use, I, and I don't have it in front of me, but we use a lot of money from school choice towards salaries.
Right. And and the reason.
Nope, sorry. Not only the vice principal, but teachers as well.
Well, right. But see with the teachers, you don't necessarily see it. When I'm looking at it, because I see one line item and you put in an FTE account, so I can see that. But like nowhere on, like I find the light item that sells me what the principal's getting. I find the line item for the support staff within, within. Norris's main office, but I don't find an AVP anywhere in the budget. Because because it's it's masked. So it's kind of like out of sight, out of mind. Nobody really thinks about it. But we need it. And it was made clear last year. I'm assuming Dr. Bonneville would would agree, but former Superintendent Sullivan. Was adamant. You have over four hundred kids. There's no way you can only have a building principal. There has to be that second line in there or second person. And then just, you know, figure the number of evaluations that need to happen. You know, so. I'll. I'll pause there. Any, any other committee members?
Yeah, can we go back to the Hampshire Regional stuff for a second? I know last time we were up at that, reviewing that budget, the assessments had not been finalized yet. Are the numbers you gave tonight? The five point one six percent or the three point eight percent, are those a final assessment increases based upon? Chapter seventies or what is that on Bobby?
Well, yeah, they, that is the chapter seventy and that's only their preliminary numbers, but that's usually what we have to go on because. We don't get the final numbers well in, you know, well after. Budgets have to be approved. So yes, it is with all the state numbers, but. There may be some changes. As John said, we may add some more school choice. Revenue to the mix for Hampshire. So there will be changes. I believe Lauren's taking out the graduation because that's pretty obvious that that's not a. Welcomed. Addition. So there's going to be changes between now and Monday night.
What about, I know Kate Mesmer came and gave some great presentations on grant money. Where is, is that? Included anywhere in either of these increases?
Not, no, not usually. That's outside of the operating budget.
Okay.
And and they, they're used for different funds. So I mean, different things, so. For instance, Title II that we get, that's used for mentors. And then there's professional development. So there's a ton of things that are grants. Do support. But. To list them all, all the time would is is something that should be done. But you need more than one person to do that when you're doing five budgets. So.
On the Norris stuff, do you have any feeling right now what our contractual obligations for increases are looking like percentage wise?
I don't. I'm currently working on that right now, so I. I I anticipate it to be pretty high because there's going to be not only. The the cola, but most teachers will be moving a step as well. So.
John, I have a question for you. So with the ARPA money, three years out. The one big ask that we have for the neurodiversity programming is a BCBA. The, the money that we spend to. Agencies to support our students with, you know, behavioral interventionist and specialists is ridiculous. And even so, there are technicians who are kind of like on the boots. Where I think we pay fifty dollars an hour, we can actually train a paraprofessional to do the same work and maybe pay them a little bit more money. For the training. So if 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 somehow through the ARPA, we could get. To pay the BCBA and a typical salary is, you know. Usually seven, seventy five ish, let's just say somewhere in that round. If if we can use that for a couple of years to get the program off the ground. I think then we'll have out of district students that perhaps we can bring, either bring back. Or most certainly not have that, that, not have that. or most certainly not have that, that, not have that extra cost of sending them out of district. So it will pay for itself. And I know that this is not the time for asks at all, but we're trying to think a little bit longer term about the programming needs.
Yeah, I, I think that that, depending on how it's worked up, right? I mean, here's, here's the path. We, we need the crutch for two to three years. And but at the end of that cycle, we anticipate the crutch going away. And because again, if we're able to reduce out-of-district placement, which is a known number, anywhere from twenty to eighty thousand dollars, depending on what it is, and not have to have that expense to make, and then we could transition off. And then the, the tax receipts that come to the school would shift in and fund that, right? Because we'd no longer have that expense though either.
Yes.
Right, yeah. I would, you know, I'm only one vote, but I would support that over on the slide board side. And Bobby, anytime you want, I, I'm with you on regionalizing the entire school system. I'll, I'll campaign with you.
And I'm not, I'm not sure that's the answer, but I'm just thinking something's gotta be done because the stories are the same year after year after year and we have to. We're gonna have to do something down the road.
Yeah.
Whether it's in my time or not, I don't know, but it's just something that's gonna have to happen because if, if we don't have our towns that can't support the high school and the elementary budget and we have to continuously cut, eventually it's gonna cost the towns more money because A, you're gonna lose your school choice in. You're gonna send people out of district at a really high cost. And there's opportunities if you fully regionalize for, you know, additional revenue. The, you get, you get the elementaries, then you get to receive that funding for transportation reimbursement. So you know, and they hit different thresholds with grants, you hit different demographics with grants. There's, so there's a lot of pluses and I really have to tell you, I don't know the negatives yet. So.
The biggest one would be salaries because all the schools would have to match the highest paying union, which is Norris. So that alone to get the other four schools up to that could, could be extremely costly. That would be one of the biggest hurdles.
Well, right, but couldn't, I mean, I'm not saying that, I'm not putting anybody on the spot, but couldn't we go to the collective unions as a whole? And ask them to work with us on, on. I mean, I, I'm not sure they would go along with it, but.
I don't know what it's like to open to go, you know, open a current contract to try to.
I hope to be off the committee by the time the next contract comes up. Or anybody. So the, the other thing, the other question that I would have around the budget and I can, I can wait until our March meeting for an answer on this, but I guess I would just want a validation that administration took a, a hard look at everything we're currently doing and still believes that we need all of that. You know, some, and I'm not saying this is true, but sometimes it's, you know, the old story, well, we've always done it that way. We, we've, you know, whatever it may be, I don't know, maybe extra support staff person or, you know, we, we buy these math books every year. I know that's not true, but you know, just, is there anything that's on autopilot? It's like, well, no, every year we order thirty-two thousand gallons of chlorine because we need to wash the floors and you know, we go into, it comes to the, I completely understand where, where this comes from, but May, we have the town meeting at Norris and Cafeteria. And we walk in there and every May over on the side, there's two pallets of paper.
Of paper.
Of paper.
We use.
I know, but from the voter's point of view, it's like, oh, my God, they're, they're, they're hoarding this. Once a year, you do a bulk purchase.
It's going in the closet. That's it.
And, and, and to that point, that's because they don't have the money. So they hoard their money all year long, just so that they can hopefully buy and the paper and everything.
It's a perception thing.
You can ask anybody. I'm the stingiest one at Norris and I'm constantly questioning whether we need it or not.
Okay.
So.
Fair enough. Any, anybody else in the committee regarding the budget? So the administration is clear direction?
So it sounds like we're gonna have to have a separate meeting. I thought everything had to be finalized by March. Last year we got into some trouble with our dates. Is it May or is it?
We, we have to, we have to have our final budget to the finance committee by the first of April.
Okay, first of April. So it has to be done in March.
Right. So my thought was if we can fit it in our regular meeting and maybe that's where we get the preliminary from Bobby. And then we schedule a meeting two weeks out just on the budget and, and hopes to, to finalize it. Assuming that we have feedback and want them to look at things on the first night. If on the first night everyone's good with it, then we go and then we, we bring it to finance.
Yeah, I, I would recommend that you have your first meeting and everybody goes through, we go through it. Make any recommendations. Then if we make any changes, we hold a second meeting just on that budget and we call it the public hearing because we have to have the public hearing. Not that we have a lot of attendance, but have the public hearing on that second meeting and then we go forward with the budget to finance.
And at what point does the finance committee representative come to our meeting? Cause I know there was a question last year about.
What they did, they did last year, but traditionally the finance committee does it. We go to them.
Okay, we go to them. Okay.
Last year was just because of the timing because we missed the April deadline. Trying to do it as a joint meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Does anyone have any feedback from me regarding the Hampshire regional budget on Monday from the committee?
They should leave money for us.
Yeah, I mean, I wonder if there's a way to have illustrations of, you know, if you leave us with this percent, then this might be an example of a cut that we have to do. Or, you know, so that they can see it in real terms, not just like we want money, because that doesn't really mean much, you know, but that it actually means resources specifically for the kids.
I, yeah, I hear what you're saying, Austin. I just, I think the, I guess I don't wanna, I don't want to, they're both very professional people and this wouldn't happen, but I don't want to pit our two principals against each other. Well, you can't have that because I need this over here in my school. I, I think, I think this, I think the commit, the subcommittee knows the solution. The solution is to utilize another two hundred to three hundred thousand. If, if, if they leave the ask in there for the two additional staff members, then at least for next year, they take, they take another two hundred or so out of their available funds. Which then brings it down to almost level funded, but they get the extra that they ask. And it depends on, it's really up to, it's in Bobby's hands, right? Because, and I say that because Bobby's gotta work the school choice numbers and see whether that money's even available. She kind of winked and alluded to the fact that there might be something there if she looked a little deeper. And then, go ahead.
I, I also, I also don't want to see you're, you're pitting the elementary against the high school. And, and that's not what we're about. Each school is trying to put forward their best budget to educate the children of Southampton. West Hampton, Williamsburg and every, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a case of the high school trying to suck up the elementary school's money. That's not the issue. The issue is all those kids, your elementary kids come up to the high school to be educated. And a lot of times because our towns can't fund both schools at the appropriate levels or the state, let's even go there, the state can't fund our schools at the appropriate levels. Then we're suffering, somebody's suffering. And it has been not, not for all schools, but for Southampton primarily, the elementary school suffers and it shouldn't be the case. And I don't know the solution necessarily, but it's, it, we gotta stop pitting, we're, we're, even though we're not a regional at this point, we really are a regional because all your kids come up to that high school.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not suggesting pitting anyone against anyone else, but it is frustrating when some schools can add and other schools have, they have no choice but to cut. And so I think that's primarily where my personal frustration is with it, especially when I feel, you know, considering that I have, you know, students in my family that are both at the high school, middle school and elementary school level. So I care about all of the grades. I think that the services we could keep at Norris would serve the family better than adding something that's extracurricular or extra in general. So it just doesn't seem very, you know, when we're talking about interventionists, that seems pretty important to get kids on track with arithmetic, reading, all that sort of stuff. So that when they get to the high school, they can excel.
So, so Dylan, sorry Dylan, to answer your question, I, I think it's kind of like, you know, it's finding that balancing act. To, you know, what, what's gonna be, what does the least amount of harm from Southland's point of view to both the regional and Norris? And is there a way to try and find a peaceful compromise?
So Bobby, to ask you to bust out your crystal ball, if you got one of those handy. If, if we were to go with a level service increase at the regional, would you think we would be able to, even at that level, would we be able to meet our contractual increases on the Norris budget within our projected assessments in town?
So basically what you're saying is, um, level service.
Across the board. Can, can we, can we even do with the money that we expect to have? Can we even do level services across the board?
No, because I think even if Hampshire Regional comes in at a two point five increase to the assessment for Southampton and you give Southampton a two point five percent increase to their budget, that's not gonna cover their contractual increases. They're still gonna have to see cuts. Cause I don't believe, and I have not run the numbers, but I do not believe that the two point five percent increase over last year's budget will cover contractual increases for Norris.
Right. I'd agree with that just because the, the step ranges that are there. Which, which leaves Norris with, and I'll say it, larger class, potentially larger class sizes. I mean, if you can't, if we can't add staff and we have to reduce staff, but we need these interventionist. And, and at that point, it's really outside the school committee. It's, you know, we, we don't set a cap on the FTEs. It's, this, this is the pot of money. Which isn't necessarily fair, but.
And is it a decision between do we increase class sizes or decrease interventional, the interventionists? But that's, or do we leave that up to admin, admin? And last time we kind of proposed, this is the idea, but then it came down to what does Lisa want to do? And then it, she, she made her magic happen.
Yeah, well, yeah, so we really, we control the purse strings. And we can set global policy, but nitty gritty staff assignments and that's not us.
Cause last time we went through and we're like, okay, this FTE for nursing goes, we just kind of kept cutting really specifically.
Well, right, because we're cutting dollars. But if, if we, if we take a different approach and we just said you get X amount of money, you know, then, then she, she would make those decisions.
And she.
If, if she has the big budget and we say we need to be at this number and like, it seemed to be like last month, we were collaborative, which I'm sure we would be collaborative this time too. But, you know, just to be clear about roles and responsibilities.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Bobby. Next, vote to approve the fiscal year twenty-three calendar. That was in our folder. And I believe there's one, does this one represent that suggested change?
Uh, yes, I'm trying to share. I thought I was just doing it. I don't know if one of you can.
Do you want me to try?
Yeah.
I think you have it up there. It was at the tab all the way to the left.
I know, but it's, see, it's big on my screen, so I'm not sure why it's not. You're not seeing anything, I'm sure. I just had it all ready to go to. I want people to, yeah, if somebody can pop it up.
I think I can.
Or share a screen. I don't know why it's not, I clicked on it. Oh, thank you, Eliza. Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it. God, if you can make it a little bit bigger so the people at home can see. So the, the principals and I have been working on this for the last couple of months because we really wanted to be unified across the district. So I'll just give you the highlights that the first day for staff is August thirtieth. Students start the very next day on the thirty-first. And then pre-K is on the seventh. Everybody has a half a day on the twenty-eighth and that's just a professional development opportunity. Now, you used to have a professional development day on the day after Columbus Day slash Indigenous People Day per the high school's contract. However, the high school has agreed for one year, we're gonna sign a memorandum of agreement that for one year, that date is going to be on November eighth. So November eighth is that, remember the county-wide professional development that I told you about? That's the day that everybody else has elections. So they have the day off. Usually professional development is on that day. So Eliza still has her three parent conference days in November. The next thing is in March, those are, are parent conferences. And then at the bottom in May, the prom, the prom kind of dictates one that may date is for professional development. I think this year it's like a week and a half earlier. So next year it is on the twenty-sixth. So we have a half day. So we are scheduled for school to end on the thirteenth and the fourteenth for teachers and parents. So I'm not sure if you guys have questions or you wanna add or change anything. This was just approved at West Hampton last night. I think they were the first ones.
Anybody?
I'll move to approve the calendar as presented.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute.
Uh, we're on Zoom, so all votes have to be right roll call. Allison.
Raydon, I.
Dylan.
Margeley, I.
Julia.
Howshire, I.
Austin.
Rogers, I.
Lumra, no. It's four to one. Passes. Next. Uh, first reading of the donation policy.
Sure. The only reason this has come up because the high school has received a few requests for money, uh, just for, just for donations. So let me see if I can share this appropriately. I did it. Look at that. Okay, I don't know why the other one didn't work. So, but thank you, Eliza. So this is how the current policy stands. And I figured since five different school districts have five different policies that whenever we came upon one in any school, we would kind of revisit it at, at, at all the schools because policies should be reviewed every three to five years. And it's difficult because the manual is literally this thick. But I think some of these, these policies, this one in particular, I think was nineteen ninety-nine. I forget which school had that, but this was the, uh, the way that it has been written. And so what I did is I took all of the current policies and I kind of combined them, and I kind of picked the best pieces of everyone. And I had it vetted through our attorney. Uh, and this is the final, uh, the final result. So the highlights is that you recognize it's important to receive gifts. This is the part when the gift is, and offers of equipment for the school, where the gift is of educational value and does not exceed two hundred and fifty dollars. So if somebody wanted to give the school a check for three hundred dollars or computer equipment that was over two hundred and fifty dollars, those decisions would always come before the school committee. Now, some of the policies did have, um, principal being the acceptor, and let's be honest, that is what's gonna happen. But by law, it has to be the superintendent on your behalf. Um, and of course, we would write a, a thank you note as, as soon as possible. My mom reads me right in that regard. Um, so I don't know if you have any questions. It's very similar to your last policy, a little wording might be different. Uh, the two hundred and fifty dollars is different, and, um, let's see. Yeah, that, I think that was really it, and, and when we talk about the facilities, I think we use the word facilities and not, school. So let's see, I haven't read this in a while. Sorry, I wrote this so long ago. But I'm not sure if anybody, this is the previous policy, if you need to look at that again. And clearly, even if, um, Alisa received a gift of two hundred dollars for something, which I don't know how often or infrequently that happens at, at Norris, clearly we would, um, mention it in her, in her principal's report at the monthly school committee meeting. So this is simply a first read, and it is in the folder for you. So if you do have any questions, um, let me know. If you have suggestions, let me know.
So is this would, in the past, when there's been monetary gifts giving towards the end of the year for, uh, field day or whatever they call it, celebration day? I, I thought those funds went to, well, maybe they do, but it was my understanding, like, those particular funds just went to the principal's discretionary account. Would, would that fall under this? Like?
So is it PTL giving this or?
No, no, it's just, it's parent, hey, they're, you know, they sent out a newsletter, we're gonna have field day, we wanna print up the bouncy house, you know, it's a, it's a thousand dollars or whatever. A parent sends in a check for that, for that specific ask.
I think it really depends on the, the amount of that check. If, if somebody really did send in a thousand dollar check, that should be approved by you. But I think if, this is common practice that over the years, people send in, um, small amounts of checks for that. Anything under two fifty, Alisa can just accept. Anything over, we would just need your okay.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this? Um, I don't. I don't have my Robert's Rules book. I don't think we're allowed to pass this on the first read. I think we, we have to have at least a first read, and then we can vote on the second.
Yeah, and if we don't get to it in March because of the budget meetings, it, it's just, you know, in the wings. I'll keep tabs of it, and when we have a few minutes to add to an agenda. So if anybody has suggestions, or Dylan, if you see something, Dylan, is your hand raised?
Yeah, I just had a question about what the reasoning is behind changing it from the bank account being tied to the school versus going into a district fund, and why that was, uh, why that was done.
No, meaning district as in Norris, not, not Hampshire Regional, right? Cause you're all individual districts. Good question, I should have pointed that out, right?
Okay, so if that's the case, we'll accept this. Well, if that's the case, if nobody else has any other questions, we'll accept this as the first read. We'll place this on the agenda under pending business or old business and mark it for a second read, and hopefully a vote when we get to it, assuming there's no other changes.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, discussion, impossible vote on the five district agreement working group document. So that was, that was shared with everybody. Um, Austin's gone over the highlights. Dr. Bonneville's gone over the highlights. What, um, has this been approved, has it been approved yet by any of the committees?
Um, last night at West, no, last night at West Hampton, we spent considerable amount of time with, um, just rewarding some things, not changing the content per se. Um, Peter Clary had some fantastic ideas, which I haven't even, I was gonna email our attorney today too, but, um, that was just the first read, and we're going to pick up on, uh, at the next meeting, right?
All right, so maybe if the committee wants, we should wait to see the Pete, Peter Clary version. And then bring that in. Okay.
Yeah, some things are clarified with the Peter Clary version, which I like. So he did a wonderful editing job. Yeah.
Is there any other new business to come before us? Nope. Okay. Vote on district improvement plan? This is the second reading, so we already had it first, or we already had our first reading.
So let me just give you the quick highlights here. Good gravy, let's see. I don't know why I can't share it. Let me give you just the highlights. It's the four goals that you've seen many times. It's in the, um, my entry plan and in the, the principal's goal, and in the superintendent's goals as well. So the highlight is, one second. Remember, this is only for the remainder of the year, so these are things that we are working on right now. So there's a narrative for the first five or six pages about MCAS, our demographics as far as students. Um, how many special ed accountability, accountability levels for MCAS? It's all specific, and I will put this, once it's approved, I will put it on the website. So the first goal was to have a determination will be made if the district can establish a viable framework to implement programming to better support neurodiverse students. Not only will this provide behavioral support, increase students' access to general education, and positively impact student achievement, it would also have a positive financial implication and decrease the likelihood of costly out-of-district placements. So that's the neurodiversity program. I didn't put, Norris originally was in the goal, um, but somebody in one of the committees had suggested a broader outlook, and then one of the action steps is specific to Norris. Um, goal two is about the entry plan that I shared with you several months ago. And I will be over February vacation, looking at my findings and, um, writing up a report of entry findings. And from that, I can see what each school's strengths and areas that we need to prove upon are. And from that, I will start to develop a district strategic plan. Now, usually all stakeholders are involved in that. Some have a very detailed one, but pretty much, uh, just, the, the difference between a strategic plan and an improvement plan is that the strategic plan is broader. It's more visionary, where a district and school improvement plan has, you know, you're gonna do this, 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 and this to meet the goal. So right now, we're working on core values. I went to West Hampton Elementary the other day and did the core values and um, I'm not sure when I have, uh, Alisa's school in the bu- books. Um, Auntie Dumphy is next week. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, so once we have core values, then it'll be easier to write the district strategic plan, because currently we do not have a district mission statement, and we really need that. And that's also something that should be visited annually, honestly. So we're going to, that'll be the first thing that we take care of. Um, goal three is the collaboration of the administrative team. We are meeting every week, every other week with the central office staff as well. And goal four, um, is really just about the social emotional well-being of all the students in, in large part because of COVID. So that goes for, you know, increased counseling, social emotional learning curriculum, um, keeping communication open with families through the newsletter. Um, I think we're gonna have the guidance counselors, I haven't asked them yet, but I would like them to present, hopefully in May or June. Um, just an overview, um, like that last, that last action step says, ensure that the curriculum is implemented um, and analyze the student mental health data, so I'd really like to give them an opportunity to just share the success that they've had in this area. And the other big change was, instead of, uh, benchmarks, I changed it to the word evidence, which is a, a better suited word for that column. And I think this has been voted on. Um, I wanna say by everyone. Auntie Dumphy might have a final read next week, but I believe everybody else has approved this.
You're coming to our faculty meeting in March.
In March? Thank you. Oh, the seventh. So like I said, only until, till end of June, so it's, we're already doing it, it's really for a few months. And then the next district improvement plan will probably be a two-year cycle, so we can dive a little deeper into specific goals that have, um, more stu- stu- student learning outcomes um, attached to them.
I wanna make a motion to approve this plan as currently written.
Is there a second?
Sorry, go ahead, Julian.
Thank you.
Seconded by Julia. Discussion. Roll call, Austin.
Rogers, I.
Dylan.
Maudsley, I.
Allison.
Raidon, I.
Julia.
Towser, I.
And Lumbra, I. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Um, John?
Yes.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, I forgot to bring up something on our new business. I'm sorry. Uh, so I know that this, you know, we're deferring some of the mask talk to the, when is it, the eighteenth meeting? I think that's what we said, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify, as far as, uh, recess, um, I didn't think that masks were covered in our current policy for recess. Is that your understanding as well?
But I would ask the lead of Mrs. Pluta.
They are not wearing masks at recess, however, after Christmas vacation and the administrative team met for the Hampshire Regional School District. And because our case numbers were so high, I think you heard that today, there was two hundred and something back then, and now there's like thirty-six. We had asked the students to wear, um, masks in the gaga pit and on the play structure because they are so close in the gaga pit, and they are so close on the play structure where they're hanging out together with their heads very closely. So they did, and I didn't hear any complaints about it until, uh, this week. Or maybe it was last week, a parent had emailed me about it, and I said, well, starting Monday, because the numbers have gone down, we're gonna let them remove the masks outside in the gaga pit and on the play structure. But kids could, you know, opt to play somewhere else if they didn't wanna put their mask on, but while they were in the gaga pit and on the play structure, we're just asking them to wear them.
So that was as of this past Monday?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
As of this past Monday, you started to ask them to wear the mask?
No.
They took them off, yeah.
Yeah, we're no longer required to wear them in the gaga pit or on the play structure.
Gotcha. And that, okay, so last item, potential use application of ARPA funds from the town. Um, that's on there as an ongoing business. I talked about it during the budget prep. I think we'd need to be aware of it. We leave it on the agenda. I think it's important for us to all, and I'll share the results as soon as I get them, but the results of the survey on the fourteenth and see what the, the public opinion tide is showing. And then we can u- utilize it to, um, start to form some of our thoughts on how we're gonna deal with this. And if that's it, nothing else. Our next meeting will now be a special meeting on Friday, February eighteenth at five thirty PM. Um, to solicit the widest possible, uh, involvement from the community. I'm going to post that as a Zoom meeting versus an in-person. Much like tonight, our numbers have fallen off, but I think we're up to forty-eight at one point tonight with the, with the meetings. And the sole topic will be, uh, the mask mandate. And that, that's gonna be our only point of conversation. I will reach out to the Chair of the Board of Health and ask them to consider also holding a meeting at the same time jointly with us in conjunction. I have a list of questions and open-ended items that the committee gave earlier today in this meeting. I will write that all down and send that off to, uh, our superintendent, who will determine who the best person is to answer those particular questions and get that feedback to us. Um, maybe by Thursday, the seventeenth, the day before, so we have time to digest it.
And I am putting out a survey on Friday for, I, I think the high school did it for students, but for staff and, um, families across all the schools, so we can know how each school, what they think about it. We wanna, all the constituents to have a say, so thanks.
Perfect.
Will we have, uh, Elizabeth Colley be reporting out, or someone from the STA, some representation also?
Well, it, it's one of the questions on my list to, to ask them, you know, we, you know, we can't force them, but yes, that we will be extending an invitation.
Okay.
And, and ask her for her feedback. This all, it's also an intent to give, because in her email today, you know, she found out during working hours, didn't have time to, 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 um, talk to the association, so this gives her a window of time and all that. Um, and again, you know, we're, we're gonna meet prior to the twenty-eighth, so we can have the discussion there. Anything else? If not, want to turn a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Allison, Austin, all in favor?
Hi.
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 The time is eight oh nine. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.